Good evening, everybody. Good to see you all here. Smile. We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. And it looks like all the members of the council are present tonight. And I've asked Jeff Smith to lay this to the Fair and Fletch.
Will you put your first?
Texas first.
Will you take this first? On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. What we've got here today to hopefully continue with and do your will, please bless everybody in this room with the knowledge and the wisdom to try to lead the city in the direction that, again, that you see fit. And, Lord, just be with everybody out there right now across the United States in these difficult times that we're currently involved in, and the families of all those affected by it directly and indirectly. Just bless everyone here and there, and, again, that will keep moving in your direction as you so see fit. Amen. Pray. Amen.
All right. We have Item 311, Consider and Discuss Proposal from Edward Joy with Vibe Business Solutions.
Yes, there's that.
He was aware of the situation when he asked me to put him on the agenda. He went and talked about upgrading. They've upgraded Vibe. And I made him aware that we have already put next link, but he said he still wanted to address the council. And I guess he changed his mind.
What is Vibe?
It's...
So should we just put this on the next agenda and maybe they'll show up? Or? Chair hasn't?
Chair.
Okay, so we'll just table this for now? Okay. Okay, next, Item Updates from the Mayor and the Council Members on Activities of Community Interest. Rick, I think you have something?
Well, as you can see up on the screen, that is inside of the stand by at the hospitals. They have completed everything in there. They were in there, sandgasted it and cleaned it all up and sprayed it with, look for zinc and they cleaned it all up and finished on the inside and started on the outside. The outside of it, my picture didn't turn out very well, but they have the plates. They took them and put them in place to replace the holes. And now they've got all that welded all up and zinked. They've been welding the brackets on the outside with a visual gauge to go up and down. They're working on that today. And also on the brackets for the coax cables for the skating system. They've built them on their own and they've blast all that and zinked it. They also have the water truck out there now and they'll be starting to high pressure wash that thing from top to bottom, get it ready for the first coat. Well, the other thing is, we're looking at the fountain in the plaza and it had a lot of cigarette packages and other trash and leaves and everything in it. So we're raining it, cleaning it all out for a few days to see if the algae get rid of that and then put it back up and put algae for better in it. So it'll be down for probably the rest of this week and we'll get it back to going again and hopefully it'll look like it did originally. It'll look good. Well, if you go by there and you see nothing happening, that's fine. If I'm saying that's not good.
And I would like to say a big thank you to Brett who goes on his time when he's not even on duty every morning to take care of the plaza so that we don't face certain criticisms. So thank you for that. And I do appreciate it. Taking your own time to take care of that. Your own time. I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, next item. We don't have anything.
Actually, I want to add something.
Oh, awesome.
Yeah, that's right. I know for a long time that the corner of Broadway and East has been a rundown home and we've been fighting this thing for a while. And I want to give Edward and Edward Garcia and Tricia Farley taking that property over. And they've done in a weekend what we were unable to do over the course of a year. And so that's phenomenal. It doesn't look like a beautified Ballenger. So there's another couple of local citizens that are taking things on their own, you know, and doing right by it. There's that. Also, baseball season is going to start in Melon. So we're starting to practice and do all that good stuff. So the youth is going to be firing back up.
All right. Thanks to Edward Garcia and Tricia Farley for your hard work, too. I like that. Anybody else have anything you want to bring to the attention? Good. Okay. We don't have anything under consent agenda. And so at this time, this is the opportunity for the public to address council, dialogue, deliberation, or discussion with council members on items that are not only agendas prohibited by law. Time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Anybody got anything to say? Yes, ma'am?
I was wondering if the city has found a realtor yet?
Not yet.
Okay. Because we had our ex job before on the 1201 Eighth Street.
Well, currently, our realtor is still Ms. Cook until we find a new one.
I talked to her. The end of April. But I haven't heard back. So maybe y'all transitioned from one to another or something.
Not yet. We haven't. We haven't chosen a new one just yet. So, in fact, I think I need to give her some information, too, that might help you in what you're looking for.
Okay. Well, Donald's already moved it twice and we did it and everything else.
Well, thank you.
Well, we still wanted to look like the old Broadway at Hamilton, but it's kind of a bit spot. I don't know. Everybody's busy, too, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Keep the critters down.
Yes, I did. Thank you. Anybody else? City Council may consider and discuss approval of the minutes for the May 4th and the May 2020 Council meetings.
I don't see anything on the May 4th that Vibe has created. Well, maybe, again, under council reports and requests, they're just a little typo thing there. It's got that crew, they spend all day sandgassing interior and exterior. It should be the crew who's been all day and then take out the exterior because it wasn't exterior, it was just interior. Just interior.
Anybody else?
I make the motion that we approve the minutes with first. That's the bid.
Okay, and Jeff seconded that. Do I? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. City Council may consider, discuss, and/or take action to hire timber to help for the summer for our street department.
This is what we've come up with. Two employees, only, the rest of council, Eric Soto, Tyron Morgan, Soto. I had originally wanted to hire full time, but I called him to talk to him. He said he would be willing to do the full time if he ever worked. And the other four have free workers and now have no job, so it's all we have.
That's all we have. Okay. All right.
These are both on hospital H R.
R.
Yeah.
We only have one that's six, eight years old and I took it back to here now.
And Mike would run beyond scope of the time, but we expect them to be here in their program. Yeah. And Mike would do whatever he's trying to do. Those who don't have time to wait.
Yeah, their main job is just going to be to go and weed and try to help us keep up with properties, which, you know, my name is, they're trying to do that right now and then they're trying to do street work and we're trying to do ad work and it's just, I don't have enough hands, so we're trying to get somebody to help us out. And that would be their main job. And I'd like to talk to, like I said, one of them in the board and I could get ahold of him. Maybe he'll call me back. I live in Boise, though.
Oh, we'll be doing this now for a while.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Well, we left the last meeting, but we had to poke.
Right.
I make the motion that we hire these two for the summer job for the street department.
I say that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mike. Okay, next item. City Council may discuss, consider, and authorize the city park to hold the annual barbecue cook-off and the city car on June 26th through the 27th, 2020.
Well, I brought an entourage. Well, I know we've kind of gone back and forth on this and at this point it's like four weeks out. The first one we did in four weeks and we had to log the preliminary January, February, beginning of March, and then we just slammed it down. I guess we need to know if you're still going to be able to have this or not. If we do, what else? We need to know about the pool and all that other stuff.
I want more. I mean, that's just, it's that simple to me. Broken water parks, broken water pumps, stuff, I mean, it's...
I will tell you, last year we cleared just over $7,300. And we are wanting to spend, if not all, at least a portion of that at the lake for equipment for the kids and young adults or older adults, whatever, to have something to do out there. I'm talking to a company now working on pricing and equipment out here.
I don't find out where I stand, or I just don't... I'm good.
We have capture of blood, people red and white, I don't really see where they're going now.
Is anything from a legal standpoint?
Well, the order still hasn't talked about just social gathering, such as water parks.
He's opened up water parks and we have...
Let me understand. If they're all of them are practicing social distancing and limited capacity, I just don't know how you can do that.
Well, I think anyone that's leering or a little scared of it still, they certainly have the option to stay home or if you still want to come out, I mean, there are several levels to do that, one of them required, but that's their choice. I mean, it's going to be 100 degrees probably the last weekend of June.
Not only that, they're spread out throughout the park. You're not just going to be in one spot with everybody there. So there's going to be social distancing. Probably about 20 feet between each of them.
Right.
At least.
Between campsites, yeah.
Yes.
I think the only real gathering would be...
There'd be worse. I mean, that ain't going to be no worse than graduation was. When everybody has the lake.
Got the lake. I think we're at the point where it's a bold discretion and they make their own minds up if they want to go or not.
I agree. You know, we also have people that are driving through town, getting gas. There are different things that, you know, nobody really looks at unless it's something that somebody wants to have in town, you know?
Is there any impact we've got already for COVID out there? We need to go ahead and just try to move on because, like you said, we're going to bring in additional revenue into here because where they go shopping, they need their items, our shopping basket or Walmart.
And if you look at the RV spots, if you even have all those filled out, that's $600.
Just for Friday.
For that weekend.
Just that weekend.
And then the money that they're going to be giving back to the park or whatever, that's money that wouldn't be there, there wouldn't happen as event.
So if this was already approved, what do we need from us?
Well, we were waiting for another.
Well, it was approved in January before the... So that's last month we were...
So you have blessing?
Proceed. I make a motion that we proceed with the vote. I say that.
Pat, do you have anything else to say?
No, it's purely up to this council. Well, you know, the order is not, as we found out, it has to design enforcement effective law. It is a guidance to law. Rules open back up again if you get the advantage. So don't take precautions and try to make decisions possibly. That's what the new code is.
And they also have talked about, instead of doing the cooks meeting and stuff where everybody's in one spot, they'll just give everybody a flyer with all the rules and determine times and all that. I mean, everybody's in the door, you know, they know what, they know what to do and everything else.
I did talk to Judge Hooker two weeks ago and he didn't have a following. He said, because of our cameras, he said he didn't have a following at all. And I didn't know that Miles is having, I think, a chili cook-off this weekend. Certainly not the city, but it's the county, so.
Right. Okay, so Ryan made a motion. Jeff seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. You got it. Good call.
Okay, well, since we've done that, I want to just verify because we've been through three city administrations since then. The camp sites will be for three days, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, because the campers, some of them coming on Thursday.
Okay.
We need extra dumpsters. Stan, will you still be able to do security?
Yes, I'll give a view about security now.
Okay. All right, and we'll be having cornhole on Friday night and colored volleyball and washers on Saturday along with the cook-off.
And what we can take from the community center also?
Oh, yeah.
You asked about the pool. We probably need to look at that. That might be one area of better control if you want to look at it from a city standpoint. That may be something else. We can control that better than we can in the park. And I don't think the condition the pool currently in right now, if it's ready to be opened.
I'm by this afternoon. It looks clear.
Well, the pool itself is ready to be opened.
People training and, yeah.
Problem is, we don't have a pool manager. We don't have a CPO or do we have any idea that what a pool manager can get life guards trained in time because they're going to school early?
Yeah, that's...
I think there's a layer of...
The mayor's grandma.
That's rules for who can open. Right. Women didn't run that.
Right. It's just a layer of...
Well, that's kind of a work in progress to find all the key layers and we've got to certify by a pool operator.
I kind of think, I mean, everybody's kind of standing back waiting to see what goes on with it, to be able to open it to where they can make a move on, okay, well, let's do this now and we'll just get this person in here for this and life guards and all that. And everything else has just been waiting, kind of a waiting thing for everything until it's been approved and all this good stuff.
Will Sam Mallory not, not go back and do it as a...
The job would have to be posted and get applications.
And they have to certify for that, right? Yes. Licensed or whatever to apply chemicals. Okay, also the sidewalk showcase is that same weekend. Also, they're kind of on the fence with us. They're waiting to see what we do. And I told them I'm going to let them know tonight or in the morning what God decided for us. So I'm going to assume, with that being said, that they will probably go ahead with the showcase for sidewalks that day right now.
Yep. So what you're taking to, yeah, or anything from Carolyn or someone, but yeah. Ryan? Sorry, I think you should have made a comment, so I don't know what it is.
This might be outside of your scope of knowledge, but I thought the schools weren't allowed to open until a certain date of the Department of Education stated, you know?
That's true. Yeah.
Okay, so however, they go there on August 3rd when it's, like, is that something? Yeah. Because everybody's worried August 3rd, but is that even an option for them to do a pool we had to worry about?
We go out for life guards and things like that. Well, like I said, it means why lifeguard you're out. You're a very limited pool. In fact, I think that today we ought to talk a little bit about, I don't know, y'all want to try to open the pool by this event?
I think it's a hard call to try, but we can, I mean, you want me to just post it?
What I'd like to say, if you're looking for, technically, I don't want to call for a certified pool operator for a season, but if you could do it for less than 50, you don't have to put out a bid so you can just see quotes from, I mean, he's on job, they don't hold out either.
No. But they're not full-time?
No, they're... If y'all are in favor of that, we could have to put an exit in to hire somebody. Anybody else in there? I'm not in a very individual interest.
They would definitely...
I'd have to look at...
Yeah.
Just for temporary, get it open or just...
It was probably...
And I had talked to a couple of people about being the manager of the pool to manage the life guards and the employees. One individual did not wish to be placed in first chair, I guess, over everyone else for fear of retribution from council members. So she opted out, but if someone were to be the manager, she would work in conjunction with them as second in charge.
I'm not sure. I spoke with her on Sunday and she said the school's starting, the way they're talking about starting schools in that area and everything, she would be tied up with a van.
Yeah, so she would be out anyway.
She would really not be in there at all.
Well, Melissa's telling me that the lifeguards that worked last year are willing to come back this year and they are certified for two years. So they'd still be certified?
Yeah, and I had a phone call from someone else, too, whose daughter is here for the summer.
How many are still certified?
I think Alyssa Dina.
I know all the juniors that are going to be seniors, they got their license last year, but I can contact them if that's needed. I would just need to know. And I got one other call, too.
We just have to determine, I mean, we have to have with, and how we're going to operate the social distancing, all this kind of stuff, you know? So, well, it might make a little impact, and it's a lot of work we have to have.
Right now, all you can have is 50% of pool capacity based on the amount of cases that they increase.
I don't think it ever did 50%.
So should we put the pool opening on the next agenda?
Yeah.
So hopefully, maybe we can find some people and talk to them by the time that next council meeting comes around.
Maybe you could get some applicants to go ahead and submit applications for, to be life guards.
I'm going to nominate that Alyssa's valedictorian of class 2020 to take care of the contact.
Congratulations. I was there and watched you. How many do y'all going to tell me, like, just roughly? Oh, I don't...
You know, the requirements. How many did y'all have last year?
I'm not a lifeguard. I'll get that information for you when I find out. Well, we'll get the information. Eli, do you have anything else?
I'm not partial to her, but she is my niece. Okay. Oh, yes, lifeguards and generators. Again, the last three city administrators had said the city would take care of those.
What was that first item?
Lifeguards.
Okay. And generators.
Last year we had a band and I think we're mainly going toward a DJ.
Yeah, it won't be a band this year.
It will be a band, so it will be straight to sleep.
It'll be DJ, maybe.
Will we still need that power grid? Possibly? We'll get back to you on the power grid.
We'll be back.
Okay. Okay. Is that it? I think so. I can say thank you. Okay, thank you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Next item was yours, too. Next, Eli, you got the next item. City Council may discuss, consider and approve adding two new members to the city park board.
Yes. Tony and Jennifer Flores would like to be sitting on the board because they've been working for us three years anyway and they bring a lot of knowledge to the table.
Okay. Got mad with that?
I'm not. I'm not in motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in?
Aye.
Thank you, Eli. Thank you. Y'all have a good evening.
Thanks you, too.
Y'all always say nothing. Okay, City Council may consider, discuss, and/or take action on approving a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for grants through the coronavirus relief fund.
As most of y'all are aware, Ballenger was approved for $188,000 probably in the state park program. So it requires us to pass a resolution before we can take advantage of the tanks and those things. So that's what, this is the first step. Again, you can apply for as much as you blow up or as a grant, which means it won't cost you anything. So at the end of the day, I figure it felt like you better go ahead and get in the process already. You know, additional priest, you know, expenses for hand sanitizer and cleaner and things like that as we open these things up of all reversible type of expenses. We, I don't know, they always spend so far, but we try to find a good...
I don't know about 100, though.
I think so, too. Okay, so, and we have plenty of time to work through that whole process and the city manager, Brian Frieda, once he gets here on July 1st, will handle.
Right now, the program needs to expenses incurred through December of this year. So this is an ongoing thing. I figure, so as councilperson like me or somebody, you have to do all this stuff, manage it. It's going to be a lot of stuff. There's a lot of paperwork you have to do. They're continuing to clarify all the type of expenses that you can give members. It's not exactly clear stuff and obviously you want to make sure that's spent properly so they can, they can come back and take it away from you later. So, so anyway, we'll take some detailed work, we need, you know, voices and things like that. So when he gets here, he can write her about it. Hopefully we can get some money back that we've spent.
So we just need to draw a resolution and...
Yeah, it's our...
Okay, do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the resolution, authorize the city manager to apply the grants through the coronavirus relief fund.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item, the City Council may consider to discuss and/or take action on approving revisions to the Ballenger Police Department's policy for use of city vehicles and equipment while performing off-duty employment.
This is our policy in place, we're going to have to revise and we put in the wording that we didn't put in. So it just needs to be approved. I already made a directive for my officers before this is approved, so.
Are you ready to change? Yeah.
Are there any essential, under four procedures? C, I don't think?
B and C. B deals with secondary, for example, officers who are working with community installers and like that, some non-police related work. So I feel like we all do the same type of... some non-police related work, so I feel like we all do the same type of, of restrictions for that. They may not be used for any secondary employment. And so when we go allow secondary employment outside of Reynolds County, um, so, um, the rest of it is more to talk about the security platform under C, which basically you said, A, no uniforms for cars, for any, for labor, for labor and using, no city equipment outside of the city. Much y'all off of that consideration.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the revisions to Bounder Police Department's policy for use to be able to be able to while performing off-duty work as presented.
Have a second?
Awesome.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, at this time, city council announces it will adjourn the public meeting at, during this meeting to convene an executive session pursuant to chapter five five one of the Texas government code to discuss personnel, uh, issues, um, discipline of the water department employee, personnel issues related to the police chief, duties of the police chief, consultation with the attorney for zoning issues. As permitted by chapter five five one of the Texas government code.
Good evening, everybody. Good to see you all here. Smile. We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order, and it looks like all the members of the council are present tonight. And I've asked Jeff Smith to lead us to the prayer and pledge.
Texas first?
Will you take this first? On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we go here today to hopefully continue with and do your will, please bless everybody in this room with the knowledge and the wisdom to try to lead the city in the direction that, again, that you see fit. And Lord, just be with everybody out there right now across the United States in these difficult times that we're currently involved in, and the families of all those affected by it directly and directly. And just bless everyone here and there, and again, that will keep moving in your direction that you see fit. You know what I'm praying?
All right, we have Item 3.1, Consider and Discuss Proposal from Edward Joy with Vibe Business Solutions.
He didn't show up.
Guess there's that.
Do we?
He was aware of the situation when he asked me to put him on the agenda. He went and talked about upgrading. They've upgraded Vibe. And I made him aware that we have already, but next week. But he said he still wanted to address the council. I guess he changed his mind.
Put his vibe.
So should we just put this on the next agenda, and maybe he'll show up, or? Chad has it.
Chad.
Okay, so we'll just take with this for now? Okay. Okay, next, I have updates from the mayor and the council members on activities of community interest. Rick, I think you have something?
Well, as you can see up on the screen, that is inside of the sand bike house. They have completed everything in there. They were in there sand gasing it and cleaned it all up and sprayed it with rust retardant, which is zinc. And they have cleaned it all up and finished on the inside and started on the outside. The outside of it, my picture's been turned out very well. But they have the plates. They took them, put new plates, replaced the holes. And now they've got all that welded, hauled up, and zinked. They've been welding the brackets on the outside with a visual gauge to go up and down. They're working on that today. And also on the brackets for the coax cables, for the SCADA system. They've done those well. They don't, and they'll blast all that and zinc it. They also have this water truck out there now, and they will be starting to high-pressure wash that thing from top to bottom, get it ready for the first coat of paint. The other thing is, we were looking at the fountain in the plaza, and it had a lot of cigarette packages and other trash and leaves and everything in it. So we're bringing it, cleaning it all out, so that for a few days, to see if the algae, get rid of that, and then put it back up and put algae for better in it. So it'll be down for probably the rest of this week, then we'll get it back and pull it again, and hopefully it'll look like it did originally. It really looked good. So if you go by there and you see nothing happening, that's fine.
And I would like to say a big thank you to Brent, who goes on his time, when he's not even on duty, every morning, to take care of the plaza, so that we don't face certain criticisms. So thank you for that. And I think you've taken your own time to take care of that, your own time. I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, next item. We don't have anything?
Actually, one of us have had some.
Oh, awesome.
I know for a long time that there's a corner of Broadway East, there's been a rundown home, and we've been fighting this thing for a while. And I want to give Edward and Edward Rosia and Tricia Farley taking that property over, and they've done in a weekend what we were unable to do over the course of the year. And so that's phenomenal. It doesn't do a beautified Mallenger. So there's another couple of local citizens sitting there taking things on their own, you know, and doing right by it. There's that. Hey, also, baseball season's gonna start in Mallenger. So we're starting to practice and do all that good stuff. So the youth is gonna be firing back up.
All right. Thanks to Edward Rosia and Tricia Farley for your hard work, too. I like that. Anybody else have anything you want to bring to the attention? No? Good. Okay. We don't have anything under consent agenda, and so... And so this time, this is the opportunity for the public to address council dialogue, deliberation, or discussion with council members on items that are not only agendas prohibited by law. Time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Anybody got anything to say? Yes, ma'am?
I was wondering if the city has found a realtor yet?
Not yet.
Okay. Because we had contact job before on the 1201 Eighth Street.
Well, currently, our realtor is still with Cook.
Okay.
Until we find a new one.
Okay. I talked to her.
Okay.
The end of April. But I haven't heard back. So maybe y'all transitioned from one to another or something.
Not yet. We haven't. We haven't chosen a new one just yet. So in fact, I think I need to give her some information, too, that might help you in what you're looking for.
Okay, well, Donald's already voted twice, and we did it, and everything else.
Well, thank you.
Well, we still wanted to look like we're on Broadway Hamilton.
Right.
This time, I don't know, everybody's busy, too, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Keep the critters down.
Yes, I did. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. City Council may consider and discuss approval of the minutes for May 4th and the May 18th, 2020 council meetings.
I don't see anything on the May 4th that I have corrections for. Well, on the, maybe, take any? Under council reports and requests, they're just a little typo thing there. It's got that crew, they spent all day sandgusting interior and exterior. It should be the crew who spent all day and then take out the exterior because it wasn't exterior, it was just interior.
Just interior?
Yes.
Anybody else?
I make the motion that we approve the minutes with directions. That's it.
Okay, Jeff seconded that. Do I? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, City Council may consider, discuss, and or take actions to hire timber, they help, or summer for our street department.
This is what we've come up with, two employees, only the rest of council. There's a little, uh, Tyrone Morgan, so I had originally wanted to hire full time, but I called him to talk to him, and he said he would be willing to do the full time, to be able to work. And the other four had free workers in that part of the job, so two's all we have.
Two's all we have. Okay, all right.
The council wants to look at these, they could pass one.
These are both on hospital H R.
R.
Yeah.
We only have one that's six, eight years old, and I hope they're back to here now.
And I'm not going to just run the out of scope of the time we expend if I'm, you're gonna throw away, you're gonna set up a program. Yeah. And Michael, if you want, we're just trying to, those who don't have a time of week.
Yeah, their main job is just gonna be to mow and weed and try to help us keep up with properties, which, you know, my name, they're trying to do that right now, and then they're trying to do street work, and we're trying to do ad work, and it's just, I don't have no hands, so we're trying to get somebody to help us out. And that would be their main job, and I'd like to talk to, like, someone in the board, and I could get ahold of him. Maybe he'll call me back. I'll let him know.
And we'll be doing this now for a while.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we left the last meeting, but we had to poke.
Right, exactly.
I make the motion that we hard these two for the summer job for the street department.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mike. Okay, next item, City Council may discuss, consider, and authorize the city park to hold the annual barbecue cook-off in the city park on June 26th through 27th, 2020.
Well, I brought an entourage. Well, I know we've kind of gone back and forth on this, and at this point, it's like four weeks out. And first, when we did it four weeks, and we have to, a lot of preliminary, January 5th, we're beginning of March, and then we just blend it down. I guess we need to know if you're still gonna be able to add this or not. If we do, we're gonna also need to know about the pool and all that other stuff.
I won't worry. I mean, that's, it's that simple to me. We're open about water parks, we're open about all kinds of stuff, I mean, it's.
I will tell you, last year, we cleared just over $300,000. And we are wanting to spend, if not all, at least a portion of that at the lake for equipment, for the kids and young adults around the village, whatever, to have something to do out there. I'm talking to a company now, working on pricing and equipment out here.
I have enough time to where I stand already. I'm good.
We have gathered a lot of people. People. Good, that's all. I really don't see where we're gonna go.
Is there anything from a legal standpoint?
Well, the order still hasn't talked about just social gathering services.
Please, so that the water parks and.
Let me understand it. They're all of them are practicing socialism and limited capacity. I just don't know how you can do that.
Well, I think anyone that's weary or a little scared of the seal, they certainly have the option to stay home. Or if you still wanna come out, I mean, there's certain levels to do that, run on and require, but that's their choice. I mean, it's gonna be 100 degrees probably the last weekend of June.
Not only that, they're spread out throughout the park. You're not just gonna be in one spot with everybody there. So there's gonna be socialism. All about 20 feet between each of them.
Right.
At least.
Between campsites, yeah.
Yes.
I think they only gather, real gathering, they, they're not worth it.
I mean, that ain't gonna be no worse than graduation was. Everybody at the, at the lake.
At the lake. I think we're at the point where it's a total discretion, and then they get their own minds up, they wanna go overnight.
You know, we also have people that are driving through town, getting gas. Doing different things that, you know, nobody really looks at. And unless it's something that somebody wants to have in their, you know?
Is there any impact you got already from COVID? I think we need to go ahead and just try to move on. Because like you said, we're gonna be bringing in additional revenue into here because where they go shopping, they need their items, our shopping basket or Walmart.
And if you look at, if you look at the RV spots, and they even have all those filled out, that's $600,000.
Just for Friday and Saturday.
For that weekend.
Just that weekend.
And then the money that they're gonna be giving back to the park or whatever, I mean, that's money that wouldn't be there, they wouldn't have us in that.
So if this was already approved, what do we need from us?
Well, we were waiting for another.
Well, it was approved in January before the COVID-19. So that's last, last month, we were.
So you have a blessing?
Proceed. I make a motion that we proceed with the vote. I second it.
Pat, do you have anything else to say?
No, it's purely up to this council to what I'm gonna be trying to say. Well, you know, the order is not, as we found, I guess, because I have enforcement effective law, it is a guidance to large extent. It will also put it back up if you want to give the advantage. So don't take precautions and try to make as soon as possible. And that's, that's what the new court is doing.
And they also have talked about, instead of doing the Cooks meeting and stuff where everybody's in one spot, they'll just give everybody a flyer with all the rules and determine times and all that. I mean, everybody's in the village, you know, they know what, they know what to do on everything out there.
I did talk to Judge Hooker two weeks ago, and he didn't have a problem with it. He's a part of our county, so he said, you didn't have a problem with it at all. And I didn't know that mine's is having, I think, a chili cook-off this weekend. Certainly not the city, but it's the county, so.
Right. Okay, so Ryan made a motion, Jeff seconded, and all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you got it. Good call.
Okay, well, since we've done that, I want to just verify because we've been through three city administrations then. The campsites will be for three days, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, because the campers, some of them coming on Thursday.
Okay.
We need extra dumpsters. Stan, we still be able to do security?
Yes, I'll give a view about security now.
Okay. All right, and we'll be having cornhole on Friday night, and co-ed volleyball, and washers on Saturday along with the cook-off.
And then we'll be needing tables for the community center also.
Oh, yeah, please.
You asked about the pool, we probably need to look at that. That might be one area of better control, if you want, at the city's standpoint. That may be something else. We can control that better than we can in the park. And I don't have the condition to pull currently in right now, if it's ready to be opened.
I'm by this afternoon, it looks clear.
Well, the pool itself is ready to be opened.
And for the training and the, yeah.
Problem is, we don't have a pool manager, we don't have a CPO, nor do we have any idea that what a pool manager can get by, for his training time, because they're going to school early.
Yeah, that's.
I think they'll later grant on or not that.
Of course, the pool has opened.
Right. Right, it's just a layer of.
That's kind of a work in progress to find all the key layers, and we've gotta get a certified pool operator.
I'm kind of thinking, I mean, everybody's kind of standing back, waiting to see what goes on with it, to be able to open it, to where they can make a move on, okay, well, let's do this now. And let's get this person in here for this, and lifeguards and all that. And everything else has just been awaiting, kind of awaiting things for everything until it's been approved and all this good stuff.
Will Sam Mallory not, not go back and do it as a?
The job would have to be posted and get applications.
And they have to be certified for that, huh? Yes, licensed or whatever to apply technicals. Okay, also, the sidewalk showcase is that same weekend. Also, they're kind of on the fence with us, they're waiting to see what we do. And I told them about dinner tonight and the morning, what God decided for us. So I'm going to assume, would that mean, say, that they will probably go ahead with the showcase from sidewalks that day, right there?
Yep.
Is that what you're thinking, too?
Yeah, I haven't heard anything from Carolyn or someone, but yeah.
Okay. Ryan?
I don't know.
Sorry, I think you should have made a comment, so I don't know.
This might be outside of your scope of knowledge, but I thought the schools weren't allowed to open until a certain major, the Department of Education stated, you know?
That's true, yes.
Okay, so how are they doing their August 3rd when it's like the last Sunday? Because everybody's heard August 3rd, but is that even an option for them to do a pool we have to worry about?
We could have lifeguards and things like that. Well, like I said, if my lifeguard's out, you're a very limited pool. In fact, I think that today, we ought to talk a little bit about, I don't know, y'all wanna try to open a pool by this event?
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a hard call to try, but we can, I mean, we need to post it.
What I'd like to say, if you're looking for, you know, technically, I don't know if you call for a certified pool operator for a season, but if you could do it for less than $50,000, you don't have to put out a bid, so you can just see quotes from, I mean, he's on job, you know, they don't hold that either.
No. But they're not full-time, just front time?
They're part of the employees. I mean, if y'all are in favor of that, we could actually put an exit in to hire somebody. I think that's on Sam and Jerry, or anybody else in there. Wouldn't there be another individual interested?
They would.
I don't have time to look at.
Yeah.
So that might be something. Just for the temporary, you can open it or disperse.
It was maybe.
And I had talked to a couple of people about being the manager of the pool to manage the lifeguards and the employees. One individual did not wish to be placed in first chair, I guess, over everyone else for fear of retribution from council members. So she opted out, but if someone were to be the manager, she would work in conjunction with them as second in charge.
I'm not sure. I spoke with her on Sunday, and she said that school's starting, and the way they're talking about starting schools in there early and everything, she would be tied up with the ban.
So she would be out anyway.
She would really not be there at all.
Well, Melissa's telling me that the lifeguards that worked last year are willing to come back this year, and they are certified for two years. So they'd still be certified?
Yeah, and I have a, I had a phone call from someone else, too, whose daughter is here for the summer.
And maybe she's certified.
How many, Alyssa, do you know?
Uh, I know all of the juniors that are gonna be seniors. They got their licenses last year. But I can contact them if that's needed.
Okay.
I would just need to know. And I got one of them off, too.
We just have to determine how many we have to have with, and how we're gonna operate the socialism and all this kind of stuff, you know? So, well, it might make an impact, and it's a lot of work we have to have.
Well, now, if you're having 50% of pool capacity, basically, in a number of cases, and they create this, and that's, who can help someone that would take?
I don't think it ever did 50%.
Should we put the pool opening on the next agenda? So hopefully, maybe we can find some people and talk to them by the time that next council meeting comes around.
Maybe you could get some applicants to go ahead and submit applications for, to be lifeguards.
I'm gonna nominate that Alyssa's valedictorian of class 2020 to take care of the contact.
Congratulations. I was there and watched you.
How many do y'all go to tell me, like, just roughly? Oh, I don't.
You know the requirements. How many did y'all have last year?
I'm not a lifeguard, I wish I was.
I'll get that information for you.
I think they're at least 10.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, we'll get the information. Okay. Eli, do you have anything else?
I'm not partialing her, but she is my niece.
Put them off, gentlemen.
Okay. Oh, yes, lifeguards and generators. Again, the last three city administrators that said the city would take care of those.
Oh, what was that first item?
Lifeguards.
Okay, and generators.
Last year, we had a van, and I think we're going to launch forward a DJ this year.
Yeah, it won't be a van this year.
It won't be a van, so we'll be a generator.
It'll be DJ, maybe a, because.
Will we still need that power grid? Possibly? We'll get back to you with the power grid.
We'll be back.
Okay. Okay, is that it?
I think so.
So, I think so, thank you. Okay, thank you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Uh, the next item was yours, too. Next, Eli, you, you got the next item. City Council may discuss and consider and approve adding two new members to the city park board.
Yes. Uh, Tony and Jennifer Flores would like to be seated on the board because they've been working for us three years anyway, and they bring a lot of knowledge to the table.
Okay. Got a man with that?
I'm not. I make the motion to, yeah, to, what, go to the back?
You have a second?
Sure.
All in?
Aye.
Well, that's a good one for you. Thank you, Eli. Thank you. Y'all have a good evening.
Thanks, you, too.
Y'all gonna say nothing? Okay, City Council may consider, discuss, undertake action on approving a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for grants through the coronavirus relief fund.
This, as most of y'all are aware, Ballenger was approved for.
This, uh, as most of y'all aware, Ballenger was approved for hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars probably under the C F R program. And so it requires us to pass a resolution before we can take advantage of the tanks and those funds. So that's what, this is the first step. Again, you can apply for as much as you qualify for as a grant, which means it won't cost you anything. And so at the end of the day, I figure it felt like we better go ahead and get in the process. So, um, you know, there's increased expenses for hand sanitizer and cleaning and things like that as we open these things up of all reimbursable type expenses. So, you know, we, I don't know, they always spend so far, but, um, we need to try to get this one to get it.
I'll have a hundred and eight though.
I think so too. Okay, so, and we have plenty of time to work through that whole process. And the city manager, Brian Frieda, once he gets here on July one, will handle.
Right now, the program needs to be expenses incurred through December of this year. So, um, this is an ongoing thing. And I figure, so that councilperson like you or somebody after all this stuff, maybe the city manager, it's gonna be a lot of stuff, there's a lot of paperwork to get through. And they're continuing to clarify all the type of expenses that you can give members. It's not exactly clear stuff and obviously you want to make sure that's spent properly so they, that they will come back and take away from you later. So, uh, so anyway, we'll take some, some detail work, you know, voices and things like that. So when he gets here, he can write her down. Hopefully we can get some money back that we've spent.
So we just need to draw a resolution and then go on?
Yeah.
Or we just...
Okay, do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we, uh, approve the resolution authorized considering any of the grants through the coronavirus relief fund.
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item, the city council may consider, discuss and or take action on approving revisions to the Ballenger Police Department's policy for use of city vehicles and equipment while performing off-duty employment.
This is our policy in place, it doesn't need to be packed to get revised. And we put in the wording that we need to put in. So it just needs to be approved. I already made that directive for my officers before this is approved, so. You just have to...
So we all even ready to change this line up?
Yeah, you go ahead.
Jay, is there a session, uh, under forward procedures, C, I don't know?
B and C. Um, B deals with secondary and haunt, for example, the officers who are working with comedians, scholars, like that. Some non-police related work, so we all do the same type of, of restrictions for that. They may not be used for any secondary employment. And so when we go to our secondary one outside, it runs county. And so, um, and the rest of it's more what we'll talk about the security passport under C, which basically you said, hey, no uniforms for cars, preventing blow up work, delayed work and using, no city equipment outside the city. Unless y'all walk back to the center.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the revisions to Ballenger Police Department's policy for use of vehicles, city vehicles that are walking off duty for, as it is.
Have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, at this time, city council announces that we'll adjourn the public meeting at, during this meeting to convene an executive session pursuant to chapter five five one of the Texas government code to discuss personnel, uh, issues, um, discipline of water department employee personnel issues related to the police chief, duties of the police chief, consultation with the attorney, cause W issues. As commanded by chapter five five one of the Texas government code.